Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the Millbrae Planning Commission meeting for July 15th. Can we do a roll call of the commissioners present?
Commissioner Quigg?
Yeah.
Commissioner Choi?
Here.
Vice Chair Davis?
Here.
Chair Chan?
Present.
Thank you. All commissioners are present with Commissioner Wong recusing.
All right, you'll all recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin tonight's meeting with the land acknowledgement. The Millbrae Planning Commission acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral, traditional, and contemporary homeland of the Ramaitush Shaloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We wish to pay our respects to the ancestors and relatives of the Ramaitush community and to affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples. We recognize that the Ramaitush Shaloni have lived in harmony with nature for millennia and that to achieve a truly ecologically sustainable future for Millbrae, we must embrace indigenous, traditional ecological knowledge in how we care for the city's lands, waters, and all its people. We will continue to uplift and foster a meaningful relationship with the Ramaitush Shaloni community, and we encourage all to visit www.ramaitush.org to learn more about the Ramaitush Shaloni people. All right, agenda review. Are there any additions or modifications to the agenda? Okay, then, first item of business is the approval of the regular meeting minutes of June 17, 2024. This is an action. Are there any motions?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
All right, the approval has been moved by Commissioner Quigg and seconded by Commissioner Davis, Vice Chair Davis. Although, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Chan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 4-0.
Next item is public communication. So this is a section of our agenda reserved for anyone wishing to speak on items that are not on the agenda this evening. Do we have any speaker slips or hands raised on Zoom?
We do not have any speaker slips or hands raised on Zoom.
All right, then. Moving on to the next item, we are on a public hearing. There's no items on the public hearing. Next item is new business, which is 959 El Camino Real Final Map and Improvement Agreement. So this is a review and adoption of a resolution recommending that the city council approve the final condominium map for residential and commercial purposes and an improvement agreement for an entitled development at 959 El Camino Real. Staff, do you have a presentation on tonight's item?
Good evening, Chair Chan and planning commissioners. I'm Nestor Guevara, senior planner here at the city, and I'll be going over the presentation for the final map and improvement agreement for 959 El Camino Real. As a way of a bit of background, you've seen this item before or this project before. It was approved by the planning commission back in June 29 of 2022, and that approval included approval both for the mixed-use development with 278 residential units and commercial space, as well as the tentative parcel map. The developer has now submitted for the final map. As you might be familiar with the project, there's an adjacent parcel right next to the project site, which is here on the screen. It's at the bottom kind of left of the lot 1, on the southeast corner, excuse me, of the project site. And this is actually a city-owned parcel. It's the city-owned parcel that we spoke about in a previous meeting, that the developer will be constructing a public plaza for the city. As part of the final map and the lot line adjustment, the developer is squaring off, in a way, this parcel, because as you kind of see in this slide, it has a bit of a peak there, so they're squaring off basically that city-owned parcel. And it'll have the same square footage, both parcels will, after that. In reviewing the lot line adjustment, the city engaged with the consultants Velecci and Associates, and they found the lot line adjustment to be accurate. After review of the lot line adjustment and the determination that it was accurate, the applicant slash developer submitted for their final map. The final map is, the final maps basically convert that tentative subdivision map that the planning commission previously approved, that tentative parcel map in 2022, into a legal subdivision of land. This specific final map for 959 El Camino Real contains one residential condominium and four commercial condominiums. This final map was reviewed by the city's Public Works Engineering Division, and it was found to be in substantial conformance with Chapter 10.15 of our Millbrae Municipal Code, and that's the chapter on land subdivisions. Along with that final map, the developer must go into an improvement agreement with the city of Millbrae. This improvement agreement kind of details all the public improvements that the applicant developer will be constructing, and those include improvements such as sewer and water lines, sidewalks, curb and gutter, and street trees, among others, along Broadway, El Camino Real, and Meadow Glen Avenue. In order to guarantee the construction of these improvements, the developer will have to pay a bond in the amount of $2,228,600. And with that said, staff is recommending that the planning commission review and adopt a resolution recommending the city council approve a final condominium map for residential and commercial purposes and an improvement agreement for an entitled 278-unit mixed-use development at 959 El Camino Real. That concludes the presentation. Staff is available for questions. We have staff from Public Works available as well on Zoom, and the developer has joined over Zoom as well.
Thank you very much, Nestor. Do we have any questions for staff from the commissioners?
Yes.
I just wanted to ask for clarification. So the task for this commission today, tonight, is to review the, you're not asking us to review the map for its accuracy, or?
No, it's been reviewed by the Public Works Commission, as well as the, or sorry, by the Public Works Department, as well as the consultant that was brought in for the lot line adjustment. It's to basically recommend approval to the city council
Okay.
of the map and the improvement agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions from any other commissioners? Okay, so the previous slide, you said, the, sorry, one more slide before that. Sorry, one more slide.
One more, all right, this one.
Okay. Oh, conceptual approval. Okay, I think I was, you know, wondering about who approves this. Is it us or the city council? So this is about the previous approval, I guess.
Yeah, this conceptual approval would refer to that tentative parcel map that was reviewed in 2022.
Right.
And approved as part of the design review packet for it.
Okay, got it. And then, so I had sort of two questions, one about the map and one about the improvement agreement. So the first is, the one thing that caught my eye on the map is this right-of-way easement abandonment. It's kind of in that curved section there. It wasn't really discussed in the staff report or any documentation, and I was just wondering what was entailed by that.
I think we do have Ahmad, our city engineer, on the call. He might be a better source to answer that question.
Good evening, Chairman Chan and commissioners. My name is Ahmad Haye, and I'm the city engineer. Can you repeat the question you were asking about a particular easement?
Yeah, it just says, one of the things on the map that I saw is this, there's a curved section below a bunch of the parcel numbers where it says "right-of-way easement abandoned", and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the city wasn't giving up anything, potentially by doing this, giving up anything it wasn't expecting to be giving up by this.
If it has a recorded easement, it's probably already recorded off another document, and this map is just referring to another document that's already been recorded. So that could be, I can't see the exact number on there, but it looks like it's already previously recorded easement. And so by this map, we are not recording it, vacating or abandoning the easement. There's a separate process for that.
All right, thanks for that reassurance. The other thing I had a question about was with respect to the improvement agreement on page 2. It says, "Developer shall complete all public improvements for the project consistent with the conditions of approval contained in Planning Commission Resolution", and then it's blank. Does this refer to a previously passed Planning Commission resolution where we were talking about the plans, or is it the resolution that we're approving tonight would be filled in there?
No, so that would be referring to the Planning Commission resolution from June 29, 2022.
Okay.
That contains the conditions of approval.
All right, great. Thanks. That's all my questions. Anything else?
I have a couple of things I want to point out. Maybe this is more for staff to make notes of. I don't think it's a planning commission matter. So on the map itself, it refers to the Encanto of San Francisco. Is that a typo, or is that? It's on the final map, and then there's a small misspelling of Millbrae, just to the left of that.
It's most likely a typo. We can look into it and give any corrections.
Thank you. And then on the agreement, I noted that the bond amount is in, it's 100% of the estimate, which was included, but the estimate excluded consulting and general contractor fees. And I was wondering, and perhaps staff should look at whether those GC fees should be included as part of the bond amount.
The applicant developer will be constructing the work, and this improvement agreement just is the amounts for the, just the improvements itself.
Correct, correct. So the estimate is 2,228 plus change, and the agreement between the city and the developer is to provide a bond in exactly that amount? And my question is whether the GC fee should be added to that estimate or not?
Public Works, would you be able to respond to that?
So this will be on a deposit basis, so we would recover any costs. As the planning manager mentioned, the developer will be project managing, and so they would pay for their own engineering and soft costs. Any cost that is associated that the city would incur as part of this project would be recovered as part of any deposits.
Okay. Fair enough. If there's something you could check, look into, that'll be great. And I think it's a business decision, not so much a policy decision.
Any other questions? All right, in that case, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
Yes, we have one gentleman. His name is Oswaldo Ossequera.
Right, Mr. Ossequera. Please. Ossequera, okay. Please.
Good evening. Good evening, planning, evening, planning commission chair. My name is Oswaldo Ossequera. I'm from the Carpinter's Local 217. So we cover also Mateo County, too. I'm here to highlight an exciting opportunity to enhance our community with the project at 959 El Camino Real. So this project has the potential to put hard-working men and women to work that live in the community by hiring a responsible contractor that does the right thing by paying level wage with the average standard wages, providing health care and hiring from an accredited apprenticeship program. By hiring a responsible contractor, this ensures men and women will not be exploited by low wages and no health care. It means work for individuals with available skills, empowering them to build careers right here at home. I urge this body to ensure that its responsible contractor is selected and will ask developer who they are planning to using as a contractor for clarity. So our question is, are they going to be using a responsible contractor? If they are, if they're having it, do you have any name in mind on the future? So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers or raised hands on Zoom?
There are no other speakers or raised hand on Zoom. Thank you.
All right, and let's bring it back to the commission. Any commissioners have any comments they want to make? Oh, sure. We can have, any motion to close a public comment on this item?
Move to close public comment.
Second.
All right, that, a motion to close public comment has been moved by Vice Chair Davis and seconded by Commissioner Choi. Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Chan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 4-0. Public comment is now closed.
All right, any comments from the commission?
Does the developer have a builder in mind or potential lists of builders they're thinking about?
I can jump in here. Hi, planning commission members. We are currently in pricing, so we have not made a selection yet. So we will, our plan is to start construction this fall, but we are in the budgeting and pricing the final permit set.
Okay, thank you. So are you, so you've reached out to builders, general contractors for this project?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you know when you will be planning to release the name of the GC?
Probably, we're starting, we're planning to start construction in September, late September. So that will probably be in August, late August.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, I'm really waiting for this to start.
Any other comments from members of the commission? Or perhaps motions?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution recommending the city council approve the final condominium map for residential and commercial purposes and the improvement agreement for an entitled 278-unit mixed-use development at 959 El Camino. All the attachments.
I can say.
All right, we have a motion from Vice Chair Davis and seconded by Commissioner Quigg. Any discussion on this motion? All right, may we please have the vote?
Commissioner Quigg? Commissioner Choi?
Hi.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Chan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 4-0.
All right, moving on to staff updates. Staff, you have several updates on here.
Yes, yes, we do. Good evening, Chair and members of the planning commission. A few updates for you this evening. First is east side specific plan update. As you know, the city released an RFP for qualified firms to prepare an east side specific plan, and happy to, for me, that the city received two responses. Consulting firms that are qualified to prepare this plan, at least the first phase of this plan, and they are Placeworks and M Group. So the next step is that we will convene the east side subcommittee, the council subcommittee, and discuss the responses to RFP and then move to select a firm. So the council will be directing staff to move forward with one of the two firms. The next update is regarding the inclusion of your hiring study. You know, we, I don't have too much of an update. The consultant is still gathering some data. We don't have any prototypes just yet for that. Any information on pipeline projects, things like that. So that's still early on, and maybe the next meeting I can have another update for you. Is there any questions on that? Yes.
I do. Where exactly is the east side specific plan? Is that the part over by the hotels? Or is it starting?
Marina Vista.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, east of the.
Just east of the El Camino.
Yeah, specifically the railroad tracks and then west of the freeway.
Okay. So we're going to actually do a specific plan just for that area?
Correct, yes.
From one side to the other side? Okay, I must have missed it or something.
Yeah, there was a council direction.
Okay, we haven't really heard about it a lot, have we?
I believe I did mention it at one update previously, but it was just regarding the release of the RFP.
Okay.
Any other commissioners have questions? I have a couple. So that would be Marina Vista and Aviador, then, right? Those are the two neighborhoods in question? Okay, and who are the two?
Mason Manor.
Mason Manor, sorry. Oh, sorry, that's right. Right, Aviador is this street, not the neighborhood. And then who are the two council members who are on the subcommittee again?
Mayor Feng and I believe it's Kalin.
Yeah, okay.
Councilmember Kalin.
And then you mentioned up the two consultants, Placeworks and what was the other one, M Group?
Correct.
Okay, has this, does the city, I feel like I've heard Placeworks has worked in Millbrae before. I haven't heard of M Group.
Placeworks has worked in Millbrae before. They prepared our Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan, and they also did work on the updating the images in that plan as well. It might be one other thing there, but they have a previous relationship, city.
How do you spell M Group? I was also.
It's just the letter M.
M, like M.
The letter.
Group. Any other questions on those two items? Looks like you have one more thing on here, too.
That is correct, yes. And the last city council meeting, the city brought forth tree removal ordinance, and basically, in summary, if you're not too familiar with it yet, it's going to require a permit for any tree removal greater than 10 inches in diameter. And based off of the diameter of the tree, you need to plant three or four trees or more and to compensate for the loss of that tree. So the city council had a first reading at the last meeting, and then second reading will be the next city council meeting next week. So that'll be a new wrinkle to our development process. So if a development project is proposing to remove trees, there will be a tree replacement ratio that they'll have to plan. And if they can't plant it on the site, then there's an in-lu fee that they'll have to pay into the city's fund that will fund trees to be planted elsewhere in the city.
Is there trees anywhere on the property, or is it a certain distance from the curb?
Any trees being proposed to be removed on the property?
So it could be in the backyard or?
Yes.
Okay.
How are they, how are they going to manage that?
There's going to be, it is part of a development application for you home, for example, or if there is no development application, they're going to be required to submit like a site plan showing the tree to be removed and then an permit.
But if it's not a new development, how are you going to?
It would be.
I mean, it's one thing on the front yard, but when something's in the backyard, it's, depending on where it is, it's going to be, I don't know, it seems to be pretty difficult to manage.
Yeah, and this is, it's interesting, Millbrae is, it's pretty common for other cities to require tree removal permits, whether or not they're associated with a development application. We don't have one currently, and this is kind of bringing us in line with the other cities.
Yeah.
Code enforcement will be involved in any instances where there's illegal tree removal, but the objective is to compensate for the removal of protected trees. And there's a list of trees that are, that don't need a permit. I don't know all those lists off the top of my head, but it's in the staff report. I don't know all those lists off the top of my head, but it's in the staff report.
And this would be a public works permit?
If it is in the public right-of-way, it would be, if it's on private property, then it would be a permit that we would.
For planning, okay.
Correct. I do have one other update that's not on this list, if there's no questions on that item. As you know, we launched the objective design standards in the community questionnaire. That questionnaire is closed as of Friday, and it ran for six weeks. We publicized it in the social media accounts, and we received seventy seven survey responses. So we think that's a very good turnout. And so the next step is we will be holding a community workshop early September after the three-day weekend, Labor Day weekend, sometime that first week. We don't have a date set in stone yet, probably in the next meeting or so. We'll, we'll confirm the date, and then we will start advertising it to the community, social media channels, make announcements at the planning commission meeting and spread the word. So it, we're planning to have it a hybrid meeting, so meaning Zoom, also in person. They're, you know, probably here or at the security room so that people can attend, even if they can't be here in person.
Do you want to note that, you know, the last time a city workshop was organized, the parking management plan, when you told us about it, I believe Vice Chair Davis and Commissioner Quick noted that that was the same day as the Mills High School event. So now that, you know, if the date's not settled, there's, seems like there's plenty of time to make sure that it's not going to conflict with anything else that might be going on in the city.
Yeah, and so we cleared it with the, we have a date in mind. I don't want to say it now because it might change. I don't want to, you know, float any premature dates. But we are looking at one date in particular, and we've cleared it with Parks and Recreation and the city's internal calendar, events calendar. Now, once we confirm that date, can't guarantee that some, you know, another, maybe a school might have a, an event that comes after it. But if you happen to know that any week, any day that week, it's probably going to be
Something's going.
Wednesday or Thursday that week, that first week of September, please let us know and we can find when that would work.
All right, any, does that, is that all, staff?
Regarding the next planning mission meeting, we are still on the fence with a couple of things. So we'll let you know Tuesday next week whether the next meeting will be council or not. That's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is planning commissioner announcements. Do any of the commissioners have announcements they want to make?
No, what's happening? I mean, it's like the days are just going by so quickly. It's like all of a sudden something is happening, and it's like, oh, my God, how did it get here so quick? I don't have anything. Maureen's usually the one that is really good.
We could congratulate the city on a wonderful Fourth of July event in the park. The next beats and brews would be what is it? I don't know. Which day of the week? Is it the third or the fourth? Is it Thursdays? Whenever, it's coming up soon, but it's moving back to Broadway for the rest of the season this year. So should be fun. Hopefully, the weather will be lovely. Not too hot, not too windy, just right.
Not too windy.
And I
No, Bob.
Don't think I can remember any other activities coming up soon.
I can't think of anything.
All right, well, with that, we've reached the end of our agenda, so any, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a motion from Commissioner Quick and a second from Commissioner Choi to adjourn the tonight's planning commission meeting. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thanks.